Which is the least publicized form of cancer, we will support the various forms of media to gain support for research and cure prostate cancer. And whereas prostate cancer is still one of the most underfunded research of health problems in the United States, and well as the world, and now therefore be resolved that the Sutter County Board of Supervisors wishes to proclaim June 2001 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in Sutter County, we hereby respectfully dedicate the entire month of June to the support of men diagnosed with a devastating disease and the various organizations that have formed to support men and their families with prostate problems. Furthermore, we will intro- excuse me, we will intro- we will introduce and support government legislation supporting funding for prostate cancer research and use the government body power and influence to pass said legislation. We hereby designate June as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month and dedicate the organization full support to all activities thereof. Passed and adopted at our last meeting, and it's passed by everyone here and it's signed by me. Would you like to say anything? Sure can.
As a prostate cancer survivor and a member of the Man-to-Man Prostate Support Group, I want to thank the board for making this proclamation. I think that we need to get the awareness of prostate cancer out before the public, and we're making every effort to do so. I thank you very much. Before I leave, I'd like to give you all a prostate cancer awareness pin, just like the breast cancer pin, except appropriately, its color is blue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. After saying prostate cancer as many times as I just did, I better go have a checkup. Okay, our next item is not on the agenda, and I'd like to turn this meeting over to Bill Grove, our undersheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for allowing us to take up a few minutes of your time. Let's have some more people coming into the audience. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mario Rodriguez. He's the former representative for the Peace Officer Standards and Training in our area. We'd like to come up and make a presentation.
As you were told, my name is Mario Rodriguez. We have area consultants for the California Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training, and I've been your area consultant in this region for a short time. This California Peace Officer Standards and Training is a organization that kind of, how would you say it, regulates, if you will, the hiring standards and training standards for police agencies, including your police departments and your sheriff's departments. We have a series of certificates that are part of the process, and it takes years, literally, to get to a position where you have the series of certificates, and the highest one is called the Executive Certificate. I'm here tonight to make a presentation of this very rare certificate. We only release them to candidates who go through an executive course and has to serve as the lead law enforcement officer for an agency, like you have a city police department, Marysville Police Department, and in this case, the Sutter County Sheriff's Department. So I'm here tonight to present to your sheriff, the California Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training, the Executive Certificate awarded to James Carl Denny.
They pulled one over on me. I didn't even know any of that. In fact, I've been bugging my training manager about when am I going to get my certificate. He keeps putting me off, so...
What do you think you came here for, donuts?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mario.
It's something I'm very proud of, and my family's all here. They just surprised me and all showed up, too. I really shocked them, so thank you very much.
We're all very proud of you, Jim. I'd be a little concerned, though. I noticed when you walked up, you asked your right-hand man, your undersheriff, what he was doing here, and noticed that he lied.
He just slightly misrepresented himself. He didn't lie.
That's okay, Mr. Chairman. We also lied to Jim to get him here.
In that case, never mind. Okay, our next item is going to be the approval of the minutes of May 29th, regular session.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay, our next is the public participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to the consent counters, which are items two through thirteen. And I'd like item number five and eleven pulled.
We'll for approval except for items number five and number eleven.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, carries unanimously. It breaks us into item number five, which is information technology. It's the approval of purchase of network equipment and related budget adjustments and authorization to use California multiple award schedule contract for acquisition.
Mr. Chairman, I ask for this to be pulled off the consent calendar based on the discussion that we had last week about it. I still feel like that we're moving too quickly. I believe that there are departments within the county that need to be hooked up right away, and I think we could accommodate those. I don't think we should be spending this type of money now to wire the entire county when the entire county does not need to be wired the way we're moving forward with it. I spoke to that last week, and obviously I'm in the minority on that decision, and believe I still am, but it is a lot of money. It's one-time funds. We're spending, and going to be spending, a lot of those dollars here shortly in purchasing of buildings and other things, and I think that my fear is that once all said done, we're going to have more things we wanted to buy than we have money for, and I just think we're moving too quickly on this at this point in time. I would ask that the board reconsider the position that we took last week informally and move a little bit slower and look at this in an option as far as moving forward with those departments that need to be wired, and there's some that need to be, and waiting that those do not need to be.
Dennis, I respectfully, actually, I agree and disagree, both at the same time. The reason that I am for going through the full hookup is that there's only about $60,000 difference in the initial, in doing option two versus option three that we had from last time, and there's an additional savings of, and I can't recall that, hookup savings?
$28,000 a year.
I think it was less than that.
Is what our current is, and the new cost that we would need to incur are about that same dollar figure, in that same range as far as the annual cost would be, and we had, we would have additional facilities to hook up under our existing structure in that short period of time that would be one-time costs in the neighborhood of $68,000.
I was referring to the actual cost to be hooked to the Internet, and I think that figure was $16,000, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Um, we...
Which is the difference between some of the departments hooking up. It wouldn't be the $28,000, because some of it...
It would be the 28, if we were to go with the full option, we would not have any of our existing leased lines, which are costing us $28,000 a year, and in addition to, if we were to go with a phased option, most of those line charges would remain until the entire conversion was complete.
Which is how much?
$28,000.
The remaining is 28?
The existing facilities, if we do not connect some facilities with fiber optic, we would need to install some Pacific Bell lines at some of those locations that would not be connected for, in the out-years, and in doing that, we would incur some one-time costs and some ongoing costs. So it wouldn't be the same 28, because we would be taking some and getting rid of some lines, but we would have to be installing some other lines elsewhere to continue to keep people connected reasonably.
Anyway, my point mainly is that we're almost there as far as we're within $60,000 of going to the full connection.
That's true, but we could do this over, we could spend that $327,000 or $50,000 or $5,000 over several years rather than spending it all at one time. That's my point.
No, I think the phased option would be an initial $275,000?
The first, the first year for phase one is $215,000. We would have the savings that we had identified from the installation of the fiber cabling itself that would reduce that first year cost by $44,000. And the second year, the second fiscal year, when this was originally prepared, we viewed this fiscal year as being phase one, next fiscal year, which is essentially almost upon us, was what we had thought would be phase two. The costs in next fiscal year, fiscal year '01-'02, would be $65,000, and then the cost in phase three, which would be fiscal year '02-'03, would be an additional $70,000. But in essence, over this rather short period of time between straddling two fiscal years, we would be spending close to two-thirds of that.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I guess I have one question for the county administrator. Do you have any reluctance in doing what Bernadette is suggesting to approve option three financially?
No, well, we have sufficient funds to fund it on a one-time basis, and we would have to commit the same funds whether it's now or over a three-year period. It's purely a policy matter as to whether you want to do it over a phased period. Mr. Nelson makes excellent points having to do with, there's lots of things you want to do. It may be that making the decision to spend it all upfront may cause you to have to, and I do not believe this is the case, under the current plans, I don't think we're going to need to delay anything else because we made this purchase. It's simply a matter of, if you want to phase it, it will spread the costs out, but we will absorb other costs during that period of time, and your savings, it will spread out the amount of time to recover your investment. I believe there's a five-year payoff on our investment?
On hard-dollar cost, it would be a six-year payout if we were to do it all at once. That would be lengthened, depending on...
And then it will be lengthened by the amount of the additional $28,000 a year, or whatever that is, that you spread it out, and so I have no problems and can recommend the option three.
Mr. Holmes, there is no problem with state funding, any of the augmentation funding that we might be getting that would cause us any shortfalls for this budget here?
There are clearly possibilities of that, but you're not going to solve those problems with one-time money anyway. The only thing that will interfere, that spending the one-time money would interfere with is your ability to move forward on other one-time expenditures such as capital costs, and I don't envision this causing that problem.
This is something that would benefit the departments, and several of the other county departments came in support because they do recognize the need for this and are hoping that we could move forward on this project this evening.
Yeah, I don't doubt Bernadette, there's not departments out there that, you know, need to do what you're asking to be done. I mean, I totally support that portion of it, and I would support, you know, a phased approach of this and determine which departments need to be hooked up right away, and I would support funding those projects to do that. Again, my concern is all at once. This goes back to the Public Works Committee, and we had very similar discussions there, so you just have convinced me that I need to, you know, support this the way that you've asked for it.
Sure.
And that just happens sometimes. I think we can better use our money if we spread this particular project out over a period of time. We're still going to get there, and we can still hook up those departments that need the service. We're just delaying those that really don't need it to use those funds if they need to be used, you know?
So would phase two be the option that you would be addressing?
Well, or something similar, if that's the best option out there. In other words, I don't know if phase two, phase two was developed, I believe, last fiscal year, a year or so ago, basically, so I don't know if things have changed since then. We haven't had those discussions. I don't know what's changed in that or not, so, but yeah, something similar to that, if not phase two, you know, option two.
Part of the reason why we would, from a technical standpoint, prefer to have the equipment all at one time is that this will add a level of complexity. It's not an insurmountable issue for us, but we will have to continue to main two different types of equipment and two different network configurations and have them shared together, because some of that information and data has to be shared. And by going with the full approach, there will be some period of time, over a month or two months, when we are installing the equipment in the various facilities, that that would be the case, but over the two or three fiscal years that we're talking about, it would be less intensive for us to try to manage and actively manage the network. And, you know, that was, that was another part of the reason why we were requesting the entire project at once.
You know, as I look over your phase one, phase two, and phase three, I think it's difficult, I don't know how you would select which ones aren't needy at this moment. I'm assuming in phase three, you have the print shop, buildings and grounds, main library, hall of records, and Sutter Branch Library. I'm assuming those you had...
We tried, we tried to organize them in phases based on the needs demonstrated as far as the shortfalls that exist in the areas, as well as the number of employees that are impacted by those various areas, which is why those smaller facilities with less demand on our system are the ones that we have listed as far as being done last. At this point, I would not see a reason to really make large amendments to the order that we had suggested the facilities be in each of the phases. Nothing has really happened over the last month or so to change the lineup, if you will, of what we were recommending as far as the phases would be.
But each, each one, for instance, building and grounds is really tied to Public Works. Everyone else on Public Works would be on, and they would not. Or the print shop, everyone would be on but them, or hall of records, everyone would be on but this building. And then with the libraries, the main lib, other libraries are scheduled earlier than the main library and the Sutter Branch Library, and I guess there's a reason for that, but it seems to me really hard to have some on and some off to have continuity within the county.
Me, too.
We have that right now, and it does work. Again, I mean, we can make this work if we wanted to, and certainly, if, you know, if dollars weren't an issue, I would support what Bernadette is asking the board as a whole to do. It's just that, I look at it from a standpoint, we're going into some, I think, uncertain times with the state of California. We really don't know what they're going to be doing to us. Counties up and down California, as far as making, they're going to make sure their budget is balanced, and they're going to balance on the backs of cities and counties, and $335 is not insurmountable. In other words, you know, that's not going to break us from that standpoint, but it's just one area that, you know, right now, we could tighten in our belt a little bit if we chose to do that, and we may pick up monies here and some monies someplace else, and, you know, we've been prudent in the past when we've been in these situations with the state, and I just think that we need to be fiscally responsible here, and I think this is one area that we could step back a little bit and take a look at it. But if we don't, I don't think it's going to kill the county if we don't. I just want to take a little more conservative approach.
I hear you, and I respect what you're saying. It's just, I guess partly with me, as I've seen Sutter County before do things halfway and be very sorry that we didn't bite the bullet and go the full route. So I will be, I would support, again, I continue to support the recommendation, but I really respect, you know, your opinion, Dennis. It's a, it's a tough decision, but in my mind, it's better for us to just go ahead and do it right and do it now.
Plus, I think the biggest advantage, again, is the six-year payoff. It's pretty unusual that you can invest $300,000 and have it paid for by charges that we are now being charged for being hooked to the net and have that paid for in six years, and so. So that a motion?
And I also agree with you, Dennis, very wholeheartedly, that we should be fiscally conservative, because we sat many hours yesterday in the slate, the state legislature, asking for money, and probably fell on deaf ears, but we asked anyway. And I would, I would respectfully submit that I think that this project would probably, being in phase two, might cost the county 125% of $350,000 versus the $350,000 over a six-year period. It's like a remodel. I think you tear in, you come out, and you tear back in again to make it liken to something, but I think I could support phase three myself at this point in time.
I'll make a motion to approve option three.
And I would...
Recommendations one, two, and three with that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay, carries with a four-one vote. Thank you. That brings us to item 11, and I believe Mrs. Foot wanted to address that.
I'm Sharon Foot. I reside at 1461 Thomas Drive in Yuba City, and I am the current Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. I just have a couple of comments, and I don't want to belabor the point, because I believe at the last meeting you had indicated that you agreed with the idea of changing the ordinance at a three-to-two vote. I have a couple of comments, though. First of all, if we are to divide the Parks and Recreation Commission into a Parks Commission and then a Recreation Commission, you will have then, of course, the need to get commission members for both committees, and in the past, you've had difficulty getting them for the Parks Commission, according to your comments. And also, how would you divide the duties and responsibilities? I serve on a number of committees, and if I didn't have duties and responsibilities on those committees, I wouldn't serve on those committees. It's a waste of my time if I don't feel that I'm accomplishing something. In the ordinance, you have the word, the term "park," which even according to you at the last meeting, seemed to be kind of open-ended in that what does the word "park" mean to you or our community members? Thirdly, I have not seen a copy of the grant for the $287,000 Parks and Recreation monies, and I don't know what guidelines there are and how much community input you need on the expenditure of that money. And the last thing I wanted to say was, if you're going to adopt the ordinance, which you will, who is going to set the meetings? And I believe in the ordinance, which I don't have a copy of, they could be quarterly or annually, annual meetings, and I don't know who's going to set the meetings on the agenda. Thank you for your time. I don't agree with what you've done, but thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to discuss that item? Not, bring it back to the board. It's your pleasure.
Point of clarification, we have, or I should say, I have a number of, and I say a number, it was two candidates that applied for the Parks and Recreation Department, and I've talked to Sue about it and talked to Nancy, and should we place them upon a position on the agenda for approval? Because I didn't know exactly, with this coming back up for discussion tonight, what we should do. Should I notify those people that we would be glad to have them on that commission, and they would serve under the terms that this board agreed to at the last meeting?
Well, I think first, personal opinion that if we do get a second reading of this, this doesn't become an ordinance until later, and, but then I would possibly show the people what the new ordinance looks like and see if they're still interested.
Sure. Okay. Because if we're going to have an actuary board, if Sharon's going to participate and be part of this board, they'd like to get it underway, and...
Sure.
Maybe they can do something positively and get themselves out and get going. Hope so.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
We'll entertain a motion. In that case, I move that we have the second presentation adoption of the ordinance of the county of Sutter, amending the Sutter County Ordinance Code by amending Chapter 80 thereof related to Parks and Advisory Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Carries four-one? Okay. Okay, thank you very much. That brings us then to item number 14, Dale Follis. It's the Approval and Design Review Number 101-01, located George Washington Boulevard.
Good evening. Several years ago, when the commission, excuse me, when the board adopted design review guidelines, your board indicated a desire to see all of certain types of projects, development plan amendments, or one, that involved design review. What we have here tonight is an item that was originally on your agenda two weeks ago, and we had listed it on the consent counter for non-appearance. We took it off at the, about two weeks ago, when we received the appeal on the very next item, which is on your agenda item, which is the appeal of the planned development amendment for Patrick and the Christ Temple Church, Buzz McGuire item. The item you have right now is, however, it is a design review. We have two conditions on the design review. We're recommending that you approve them as proposed. The first one is a screening of the onsite trash receptacles and containers if they're in front of the front fence, and the second condition is landscaping shall be raised and a berm provided along Livock Canal.
Okay, are there any questions by board members?
Dale, what was the purpose of the raised berm along Livock Boulevard, or Livock Canal?
Basically, to give you a landscape berm to hide the parking a little bit. You can still see the parking, it won't be, shouldn't be too high, it just gives you a little bit more landscape feel adjacent to the canal, in between the canal and the parking lot that's going to be behind it.
Okay, could that also be done, though, with shrubbery?
That could be done with shrubbery.
If the applicant decided to do shrubbery, would that be acceptable?
That's another alternative.
There's basically also, isn't there a berm already on that canal? Basically, how much higher do they have to go?
It's not that much of a berm. It drops down, and it's basically just a road, a place where people drive back and forth along the front there right now.
So if we, if...
In fact, I think I have a picture.
...that condition, how does that come into effect as far as if they come in with another alternative?
If you wish to amend that condition to require shrubbery with one- or two-foot growth or height, that would be adequate, do the same thing. What we're looking for is some vertical height there, basically to break up the view between the canal and the parking lot a little bit. The berm does that, and if you put a berm there, you put simply ground cover on it, that will still suffice. Other option is put raised, or put landscaping in that'll have some bushes or something to give you one- or two-foot height, such as...
Is that presented as a planning commission, is possible?
No, that was not.
But that would meet the intent of planning?
The intent was, as I say, to give you some vertical height there.
None of the other properties there have a berm?
No, but the property right next to it, the church to the south, has a rather nice landscaping area with junipers, which do the same thing.
They just use shrubbery?
They just use shrubbery.
Would we be asking this applicant too much of the berm? I mean, is it an additional cost that's in an ordinance cost versus the landscape?
The berm does provide one secondary purpose. Instead of putting a six-inch berm to stop drainage of the site into the Livock Canal, the berm also, the landscape berm also serves that purpose. We're going to need something there to prevent flow from the site directly into the canal.
Okay.
Dale, I have a question on the fencing, and I'm not real clear, well, I'll start, which is sort of assumed here that it will match the fence separating the warehouse stor- the warehouse storage yard from the office parking area. And, and why are you recommending a board fence? Because they don't last and-
I believe we're recommending a solid fence. Could be a board fence, could be a masonry fence, or as we suggested at the planning commission, it could be a pseudo-masonry fence, basically a stucco fence. What we're looking for is something solid, you can't view through, and that was one of the conditions being appealed under this next item under your agenda, is what type of fence we're dealing with. The applicant wants put chain link with slats in that. The conditions of the zoning code amendment that you just approved earlier this year for contractor yards required solid fencing. The guy, design guidelines recommend strongly solid fencing of some form, either boards or masonry, or as I say, a pseudo-masonry. We're recommending that for the solid fence for, one, appearance sake, two, noise, hopefully noise buffering and dapping from, from those very noisy vehicles we expect to be have behind the, the site, plus whatever else is happening in construction activities back there, and the adjacent residential which is immediately across the street. If you go out there, you'll see single-family residences right across the street. As we indicated in the appeal staff report, this property is in an area of transition. The property to the north and to the west of this site is industrial. The property to the east of the site is residential. The property immediately to the south is a church. We're looking for the, the fence to give us a, both a visual buffering of that impact that's going to occur behind the fence, and we're also looking for some noise buffering on that.
Dale, wouldn't the, I, I believe that that industrial zoning was there prior to those homes being built on the east side of George Washington. I think those homes were many, most, that subdivision in there, there's a duplex subdivision in there, a little single-family. I believe those were built probably about the same time or after a lot of that industrial tract went in.
I know that the industrial zoning on that property for the M-one P D went in just before I, I got here with nineteen eighty, eighty-one. The houses, several of those houses were there, I believe, but I don't think all of them were there. I can't say for sure.
Yeah, so I-
It all happened, it all happened in the early eighties, maybe late seventies.
Believe late seventies. But wouldn't the residential and the church property be the transition property to the industrial site rather than industrial property be the transition the other way?
Well, we're having, we have the opportunity to buffer the two, the two uses. I, again, I'm not sure when or who was there first. I do know that was when I arrived twenty years ago, we had industrial zoning on the property. It never developed. We have had industrial zoning further down along George Washington. What developed is a series of churches when we allowed churches in the, in the industrial zone, the M-one zone. If you recall, there's a church immediately adjacent. I can't recall what the order of the churches, but there's three churches-
Three churches in a row.
Right out there, almost in a row.
And, uh, community, just a community church.
But there's three of them in a row. They all occurred in the industrial zone when that was allowed. The residential across the street has been there for quite a while. Further up, when we had the P D on, further to the north there on Commercial Street or Commercial Drive, the north side of Commercial Drive is, is a heavier commercial or light commercial with a P D restricting its commercial use. The south side is a residential duplex, I believe it's duplexes there that we put a P D on, and that was, we're going to use that as a buffering that location. And then south of tho, those duplexes, we're going to be residential. And as I say, this all occurred right around nineteen eighty, plus or minus a year, a year or so.
I believe either in the, and it may be dealing with the appeal later, but reading both staff reports now, I believe that the applicant had indicated the possibility of, again, putting up some type of fence and doing landscaping and that in front of that fence. Is that, in your opinion, an acceptable alternative to the solid fencing we're talking about here?
The, one, landscaping will take a while to get up and hide, even where we have landscaping in, around the community in front of the fence, unless it's a, a really dense landscaping, it takes, one, quite a while to get up and hide the view of what's happening behind, but two, you, sometimes you can see through it. So it doesn't necessarily meet the desires from staff that a solid wood fence would provide.
Well, I would think, I agree with Joan from the standpoint that the, you know, a, a board fence, if you want to look at a board fence, I think is very unattractive and, and I don't know if the person's going to be watching this tomorrow night, is the new fence is put up on Butehouse Road across from City Hall. That fence is, I'm sure, within the, within the setbacks of the property owner, and they, they constructed a six-foot fence probably for privacy, and I don't begrudge, begrudge them of that. But at the same time, it's very aesthetically unpleasing to look at. They could have done something very, very nicer there with some landscaping combinations, and that's why here is an opportunity, it's not a large fence, and, and probably the wood fence would be the cheapest thing to put up, but at the same time, from an aesthetic standpoint, if you're looking at transition, I would think a combination of, of other materials and possibly landscaping would be aesthetically more pleasing, just a board fence across, stretched across there.
We gave, as we indicated at the planning commission meeting, we gave the applicant the option, what type of solid fence he wishes to put up. We had discussed with the design person, as I indicated previously, the pseudo-masonry fence, basically a stucco fence, which is a solid fence, gives you a block's view entirely of what's behind. It's basically a wood frame fence with stucco material over the top of it. That's a possibility. It's not as solid, not as dense as a ma, a true masonry fence, but it meets the design guideline requirements. It gives you a good blocking of what's happening behind, and it does provide some, not lot, but some noise buffering. That's, again, the option of the applicant.
Have people from the church that abuts this property made any comments?
No, we have not. I, I discussed it once with a couple of people I met on the church property when it's out there looking at it, but they had no comments.
They've done a, a good deal of landscaping on the north side between their property and this property.
They have, have significant landscaping in the front of their property. On the, along their north property line, they have a cyclone fence, and it runs all the way down, basically a cyclone fence. They have some landscaping within that cyclone fence.
Well, and then I would assume if they felt the cyclone fence was adequate and the neighbors have not complained about that, I mean, I I think a cyclone fence is, is much more solid and durable, especially when you're dealing with an industrial business, than a wood fence, and I see wood fences falling apart all over the place, and people just don't have the time to, or the money probably, they're busy with their business, to replace those. So I'm like Dennis, I would rather see a cyclone fence and see landscaping used to buffer that than I would a solid wall or a, a fence. You know, when we did these guidelines, I guess in my mind, when we were doing the guidelines and solid fence and so on, I was thinking of places like Cisco, you know, large plants like that, not, I didn't have in my mind at that time, local businesses like this that are surrounded at least on two sides by other industrial tracks that have cyclone fencing. And no, and you know, no one is complaining about that. If the church was here, if a group of people from the church, you know, were here and had felt that was really going to be, having an, an effect on, on their property, I would be more inclined to support that. But they're not, and they have a cyclone fence themselves, so they find that acceptable as a buffer between them and the piece of property next door to them.
I, I have physically been out there to look at it, too. I think a wood fence down the road would be just absolutely a visual, just to me a disaster. But there's cyclone fences already out there that have, have oleanders up against them, and you can't tell it, and, and the adjacent properties all have that in there. It looks pretty good. I think if it tied together, that would make that whole area look good with cyclone.
Give it a greener look than what it has now, which is, you know, I think it'd make it more attractive to have landscaping there rather than, than board fencing.
In the break here, I'd like to go back to the berm. You mentioned a berm so that water from the parking lot would not enter the Livo Canal?
One of the things-
Where would it go?
Well, it would not enter directly into the Livo Canal. What it, the plan envisions is that there will be a collection facility on-site somewhere, that they'll have to design that as part of the drainage plan of the property. All water will go into that drainage facility, and before that water flows into the Livo Canal, any debris, sedimentation will be filtered out, separated out before it enters into the Livo Canal. Currently, there are several businesses along the canal that have pro, a six-inch asphalt berm, and some of them simply have dirt out there to prevent that, and it drops into a, a drop inlet. I believe the church has a drop inlet right there. Drops in and then goes in the Livo Canal. Again, it's a, to prevent sedimentation of the bank, erosion of the bank, but we have that in the drainage plan proposals. Have some type of separation there between the canal and the on-site. They have that, all that water runoff go into a drainage facility and then go in.
Okay, so if this is taken out of the, and the board requests that landscaping be put there instead, that problem will be solved in the drainage?
But I'll still need to have some form of a, a short or small berm to prevent the drainage, or something, a raised area to prevent drainage.
But that is into the drainage plan?
Drainage plan.
Okay, so it is taken care of?
That would, the drainage issue, yes, would be taken care of in the drainage plan.
The setback on here from the west edge of the, of the top of the canal back to about where the parking lots start, it looks like it's about forty feet, forty-five feet, it's fifty foot to the building, and the parking lots project out, the parking stall projects out a little bit beyond that, so it's about forty-five feet in there. Their landscape plan that they submitted to the planning commission shows trees out front that shows ivy across, a, a strip of ivy. I'm guessing it's fifteen feet or something like that, and if just looking at a relative scale, behind that, there's bark and stuff, I would think that that in itself, you know, forty-five, fifty feet back from the west toe of the, of the canal, plus the width of the canal, plus the, the street out there, I mean, that's quite a setback to, you know, what little paving that you would see. Again, I'm curious as to, you know, this requirement of berms, when it seems like something other than a berm could have very easily satisfied any concerns that staff would have had as far as trying to shield that parking area.
Again, it was, I had that relatively success twenty years ago with intensive landscaping and berm as a means of shielding the parking lot visually from the street. Berms is just one way to do it. Large or high vegetation is another way to do it.
Well, my, my concern is if this board says, okay, we agree and, and, you know, say berm, and they come up with something that's much better than a berm, it'll be back before us because the board said, no, we said we wanted a berm. And that's my concern is, you know, this stuff needs to be flexible enough. If we're, if we're not going to get, and I hope we don't ever get to the point where the applicant has to have everything in writing, show us cross-sections and all that kind of stuff of landscaping, we don't require that currently today and hope we never do, but if we're going to keep open, open enough mind to say, okay, you know, do this, do this, here are the conditions you have to meet, then also we need to have an open mind when we're saying, put a berm in if we really don't mean that it only can be a berm. Now, if there's other means of achieving that, the staff report should say a berm or some other means, you know, that the planning department, community services department agrees to or something like that, and it was open enough that the applicant does not come back to this board if they want to do something different than, than what the board says or the planning commission says. That's the point I'm trying to make.
I, I have another question. If the traff, if the trash disposal area is located east of the fence separating the warehouse storage yard from the office parking area, I'm trying to say, I, I, I can't figure that out from these plans where you're talking about. I mean, I know it's east, but maybe somebody can show me here.
I'll see if we can work this.
Okay.
Oh, no.
They're going to need, we're going to need to have the screen brought down. That's the downstairs public works people?
Want me to call down below?
Why can't we just ask the applicant where they're planning putting a trash enclosure, and if it's out in front, they got a screen, it's behind the fence, it's screened.
You may ask them on the deal.
If they pointed out on this map, I'd be happy.
Okay, so if it ends up being outside, when we get ready to finalize the building, we say, nope, it's outside the fence, move it behind the fence, and that condition goes away.
Condition is written so that if it's behind the fence, they don't need to screen it.
Right.
So the condition can stay and they just don't have to build anything if they're not going to have it there?
Well, it'd be simpler to say the condition is, is that the trash disposal area must be screened. Isn't that what we're after? No matter how they do it.
Again, we wrote the, I wrote the condition to provide the applicant the option of where he wanted to put this trash enclosure area. If he wants to put it in front, it must be screened. If he wants to put it behind, then the fence separating the parking area and the contractor's storage yard will provide the screening. Again, we gave the applicant the option.
I think I, in my mind, the, the reading would be clearer that the trash, no matter where that trash disposal area is, it should be screened. It doesn't matter whether it's, to me, no one on north, south, east, or west wants to look at the trash disposal area, and I'm sure they don't want to either. So I think the condition should just be that any trash disposal area, onsite trash disposal area must be screened. Makes sense to me. Maybe it doesn't to anybody else.
I think number one says that.
Well, well, it says a whole bunch of stuff that's hard to figure out, at least for my P brain. I would like something that's just clear.
Yeah, it could have been easier written. It could say, trash enclosure shall be screened from public rights away or something. In other words, that was, I think-
Public view.
Public view, that would have taken care of it. And then if the applicant chose to put it outside for whatever reason, maybe because of what, why SDI wanted it outside the fence, and then they'd have to screen it if it was behind the fence, uh, that it makes sure that it's, you know, is properly, appropriately screened from public view.
Any other comments or questions for Dale? If not, would the applicant like to address the board this time? Come on up, please. Please state your name and address.
My name is Jim Patrick, and I live at two-three-four-five Blevin Road. And I, I think he's done a good job. I think he's done a lot of good things here, but the, the fence and the ditch, there's three things that, that, that I have problems with as a, as a property owner, and the one is the fence. I went out there in nineteen seventy-seven, and there's a lot of, not a lot, but there's a considerable amount of theft out there, and then I even had a dog and almost got in trouble for having a dog. So we didn't have the dog, but we've had motorcycles taken out of the yards and everything else is with locks cut and everything, and I think a solid fence encourages that. You know, for, I don't say it's older people, I just, someone tuck the stuff. They tuck wheels off in pickups, fancy wheels. They tuck motorcycles out, they've tucked go-karts out, cut holes through the fence to take the stuff out. So I, I, I'm, again, a solid fence based on our past experience with that. The, the ditch there, I would like my side to look kind of like the church's. I think the church has a nice idea there, and I think it's well landscaped. I, I don't know if that's good about having all that fine in the ditch, but it does look nice. I don't know how that affects the, the drainage through the winter time. The bottom's open, but all the sides are planted. And I went over and talked to them about that, and, and they, as far as I can tell, they don't have any problems with this at all, the people there now. The other thing was the water, which we got that eliminated. There's no water out there at all, has to be well water. And that's the only three things I have that, that I have a problem with the pipes. The pipes was put in by the county. Those pipes were changed when they boarded the Colusa Highway with a larger, they put a larger pipe through there because it never would drain the other side of the ditch. So when they put a larger pipe in there, it drains a lot better now down through there. The county went through and put new pipes in there. Now, I don't know if it's upgraded to like it's supposed to be today or not. I don't know what the requirements are. The two small ones, I'm the one that had that property. The two small ones, I'm the one that had that property changed from industrial to trying to do some mini storages. And then the first part of the eighties was not a good time to be even outside, might less try to do anything, it's pretty disastrous in, in our line of work. So I didn't, we didn't do that, but that's when that property got changed to a planned development was, we did that in the, I think it was the first part of eighties. It was just a bad, a bad time. But if I can get these three things straightened out where I can live with these, I'd like to build a shop there. And I don't have a problem with landscaping it. I don't want to have problems with the neighbors across the street. They weren't there first. That duplex was built last. Titan Trust built that duplex there on the corner. And I, I believe it was Randy Lobland that built the water office in there, but I'm not sure. I can't, I can't really remember. I think it was. But it, but all of that subdivision was in there prior to most of those houses directly across from being there. Now, some further to the south, they were, they were there. Some of them were there. And just those, those three things that I, I need to get straightened out for me. I need it open to where you can see. A cyclone fence with a lot of shrubs is great, but solid fence is going to create problems out there. We've had them in the past. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board, it's your pleasure. I think we're handling the drainage pipes in the next item.
Right.
Well, I guess I would make a motion to adopt the recommended findings. And as far as the design review, to change item one to state that the site plan show, show onsite trash, that the onsite trash disposal area must be screened. That's number one. And number two, I, I need some help from you, Dennis. I'm not exactly sure where we ended up with the berm or the planting or, what would be your suggestion?
I would think you could also say there that the, you know, the parking lot shall be screened from, you know, view from public right of way by use of plants, materials or, or berming. In other words, in other words, just screen it.
My item two then, in my motion.
Is that clear enough for staff to understand what our intentions are?
Is it clear enough for the applicant?
The applicant's got it.
Could someone explain that stat to me, please? Because when I come in there and I haul a piece of equipment on a trailer, is that considered stat?
Well, this is, that's not in this item on the agenda. That's next. We're just dealing with these, the design review, two conditions.
And the answer is no.
Sue, did you get the motion? Do you want to read it back to us, so everybody's clear?
The recommended findings and number one. The site plan shall show onsite green.
No, shall, 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 go ahead.
Trash disposal area should must be screened and the parking lot shall be screened from the public right of way by use of plants, materials, or berm.
Okay, plant material, not?
Plant materials?
Plant materials or berming?
I think you better say landscape material, plant material, could be some rower's prunings.
Landscape material.
Shreddery or whatever.
A pile of prunings.
Well, if they change them out weekly, I mean, as long as they stay green.
Pile them up and keep them green, paint them.
You know, I, I think we always have to, to take into account that this, they're building a, a new, you know, a new office in a new building and they're going to want it to look really nice. And, I mean, they're not going to try and put in something ugly out there. They wouldn't be spending all this money not to make an attractive place. So, you know, I feel pretty confident that the changes in the design review are, are acceptable.
I'll second that.
Kevin, motion in a second. Although somehow my mind, Sankey Road, I don't think ever looked good.
Sankey.
Cisco. No, no, not Cisco. Little further east.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Kevin, motion in a second. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, Carrie Janosley, thank you. Our next item is an appeal. And the appeal portions, I think, were just, I think, taken care of. However, we still have not resolved the fence portion, nor the pipes. Miss Fallas?
The applicant, again, the same project, contractor's storage yard, he's going to build a three thousand square foot office, eight thousand square foot warehouse and have a large contractor's storage yard. He has appealed conditions eight, nine, eleven, twelve, twenty-two, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. Please note that this agenda report has an error in it. On the bottom of page one, the second to the last line, it repeats condition twenty-six, that should be twenty-six and twenty-seven. And then on page three, on the line just above where it says drainage flow requirements, this sentence should say, since conditions twenty-two and twenty-seven are requirements of the zoning code. What the, the applicant had indicated on the previous, previous item was that, and what staff has indicated in the staff report, is that the planning commission conditions included a requirement for hooking to Hillcrest Water. After the appeal, I called Hillcrest Water, checked with them. Hillcrest Water has confirmed they do not have any water system out there. Staff has recommended on those conditions that we delete condition eight and nine and amend condition eleven to read water supply from a private well. I commend condition number twelve. The amendment in number twelve, that condition number twelve is the same as the planning commission had seen previously, with the exception, we have included which are not used, indicating that any onsite wells or septic systems which are not used as part of the project will have to be abandoned pursuant to county's code. Additionally, conditions twenty-two and twenty-seven were appealed. Those are the conditions pertaining to the solid fencing that we, we just discussed solid fencing with the previous item. And again, twenty-seven, and this is the condition pertaining to stacking of material. Condition twenty-seven and also twenty-two are coming out of the new contractor's storage yard requirement that was adopted into the zoning code earlier this year. Basically, solid fencing, which was previously discussed, and the stacking issue. The stacking issue is that you should not be stacking materials in your yard up next to the fence that will be, can be seen over the fence from people from the public right of way and residential uses across the street. The zoning code provision does allow and does discuss the possibility or the use of the rear portions of the yard to stack up material as you get distance from that fence, allowing some stacking. But the major portion of this condition is that not to come up right next to the fence and stop, start stacking material higher than the fence level. You can park vehicles there or other equipment there that will be above the fence under the zoning code requirement. It's just a stacking requirement for stacking materials and other equipment. Again, those are two conditions of the zoning code as it now reads. The condition number twenty-six is, this is the one pertaining to the, the bridges culvert. There's, the property is accessed by two culvert type bridges. There's, on the bottom of the culverts, there's a thirty-six inch culvert and an eighteen inch culvert. If you'll look at the last page of the exhibits, you'll see noted aerial photo here, excuse me, site photo, and you can see the two culverts in there. Currently, there's a thirty-six inch and an eighteen inch culvert. The master drainage plan prepared in nineteen ninety-nine, I believe, which has yet to be adopted by the board, but has looked at the Live Oak Canal. It recommends a seventy-two inch culvert to meet drainage flow requirements. That's, I believe, is what we put in at, at the state highway when that was put in. The two existing culverts are substantially undersized to meet the drainage requirement. Staff had recommended and the planning commission approved a requirement, requiring the applicant to upgrade those culverts as part of his drainage project, or excuse me, as part of this site development project on the property. The public works department, in discussing this question with the public works department, they have indicated that they are quite acceptable to taking a deferred improvement agreement on those culverts so that they are done at some time in the future. But again, as part of the normal development of the property, this is a physical requirement to make the property work for drainage across the frontage. We, we agree that public works probably put those culverts in many years ago at that, a time that we are looking at different drainage options for Terrebonne. Now, Terrebonne has drained down the Live Oak Canal, and in order for it to work, somebody's going to have to put those culverts in to bring them up to eventually the seventy-two inch size or whatever else is required.
No, I have a question about that. If we were to do that now, and I don't know the answer to this, I wouldn't be asking it, but if we were to put larger pipes in now, then what happens in front of the church? Because that isn't going to be enlarged or any, what's water going to do? I guess I want to ask public works that. If you have larger pipes coming in, it's going to carry more water, there's not going to be larger pipes in front of the church and on down the line. So how does that work?
Well, again, you would be, the smallest pipe being the way, down the, downstream would basically dictate the flows of what happens in the canal. The question is, does the applicant, the question should be, is does the applicant put those culverts in, or is the county going to have to put them in at some later point in time? Or does the applicant put them in at a later point in time under deferred improvement agreement? Staff's recommendation and what was in the, the staff report is the applicant does it now. However, it can be deferred to a later point in time. Here's Mr.
Mr. Chairman, if you recall, under Highway twenty, we put a seventy-two inch culvert and at that location, we installed it at ultimate depth. Okay? And if you notice at the, at the, at that location, the canal is excavated about two hundred feet upstream and about a hundred feet downstream to ultimate slope. Okay? Our recommendation will not to put the pipes at this time, you know, for the applicant to put the, the, probably seventy-two inch pipe. But our recommendation will be to defer it at, to, to future time when we come in to do the whole canal. And at that time, it'd make more sense to put it, put it in. I hope that answers your question.
We haven't adopted the drainage plan yet.
We have, we have an adopted plan right now, which was prepared by the Nolten Associates quite a few years ago. We're in the process of updating the, the plan.
Call for seventy-two inch pipe?
Yes. Actually, if you look at, at Highway twenty crossing, it's seventy-two inch, the existing crossing we have now. So this will be at least seventy-two inch crossing.
What was the financial plan in order to get those facilities in all along that area?
The, the fees which the applicants are paying within zone seven, that's where the property is, goes to improving the, the major crossings we have like on Franklin, Lincoln, Boge, and, and the ultimate, you know, all the way along township and some excavation too. There is no funding for the, for the private crossings.
But they're paying that.
The, the fees they're paying.
They're paying these development fees.
Exactly. And those, those development fees are earmarked for, for improvements downstream from that location. They're not to fund.
Public facilities.
Public facilities. They're not to fund private crossings.
You know, the thing that strikes me as unfair about this is that, has, do we have a deferred agreement with the church or anybody else?
I, I believe so. We have, we have some deferred improvements with the, with, with properties in that location, yes.
So what kind of money are we talking about?
If, if they're going to be slipping a seventy-two inch pipe on, on a, on a crossing like this, I really don't know off the top of my head, but it's, it could be.
And no one knows what the church, what they had paid when they, the churches along there? They've all been relatively recently.
They paid the fees, okay? There's, the fee is.
They just paid the fees for?
Yeah, I don't think any of those crossings are improved to ultimate, ultimate width, ultimate diameter or depth.
I'm probably way off, George, but I recall around a hundred dollars a foot for the pipe itself. Is that about right?
Roughly, yes, yes. And, and installing it.
For to dig out the old and, and put in, of course, put the pipe in place.
Right, and improving the, you know, the, the actual backfill and, and the driveway.
Am I understanding this right then? For each pipe, we're talking about seventy-two hundred dollars? Hundred dollars a foot, there's seventy-two?
There's seventy-two in diameter.
Plus labor. I mean, that, that's just pure cost of pipe.
Cost of the pipe.
Yeah, plus the labor to install it.
If it's a twenty footer, it'd be?
Two thousand dollars.
Two thousand dollars, plus the labor to dig out the old and, and backfill.
George, with the elevation of the ditch that I'm looking at in this photograph, would a seventy-two inch, would a seventy-two inch pipe adapt to this ditch at this time? Or that would be through a modification of the ditch because you wouldn't have enough fill over the top?
That's correct. The, the ditch would have to be excavated and, and deepened. And that's, if you look at Highway twenty, that's very, that's pretty much the ultimate depth at that location.
Well, I'd be interested to know what the other property owners along there did besides pay the fee.
We can get that.
What goes under the two industrial drive roads? Is there seventy-two inch under both of those?
I don't think we have anything right now. You know, we still have comparable sizes to what, what the, what the property has right now.
But that's a public facility.
I'm sorry?
But those areas are a public facility.
I think these are funded through the, the fees, yes.
Right. It's not a private crossing. Any other questions from the board members? If not, would the applicant like to address the board again?
Well, all of the culverts on that highway are the same. You know, except for, or the, sorry, Highway twenty, they're all the same.
Yeah, our public works person is telling us that he would like to defer that, but that means you're still on the hook sometime in the future.
Well, yeah, wouldn't they change the balance of the rest of them? Wouldn't do any good to change one balance of the rest of the same. Yeah, but if we were all on the hook, that's fine.
So you'd have no problem with a deferred agreement?
I have a problem with just me going out there and changing my mind on itself.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. If there's not an agreement with the other, if we don't have anything from the other landowners, that's exactly what's going to end up. He's going to be ending up paying for something in front of his and no one else is going to have to pay for it.
We, we will not call the agreement for one individual property owner and, you know, we will not do a project unless all of these culverts are replaced.
Oh, okay. So everyone would be involved with?
It won't, it won't make sense for us to, to, the only reason, I'll be frank, the only reason we put Highway twenty's culvert to ultimate depth because we were boring under the highway. It's an expensive venture. So we put it at ultimate depth and we excavated the canal.
When these changes come about, does the applicant, is the applicant aware of what the cost might be for him to change both of these in the neighborhood of ten thousand dollars or something to dig up what he has and replace them?
I'm not sure Supervisor Silver, I would like to, you know, we'd like to put a cost estimate to it and look at it more closely before we get committed to a maximum, but...
George, if I understand what you just said, why does it have to be part of this? Because part of his, the action tonight? Because when, when that time comes, you're going to be approaching all the property owners and they're all going to be, so why would we ask him to do this now?
Supervisor Beckel, if I might comment, the reason you put it as part of an application like this is the only time the county can impose, or a governmental jurisdiction can impose a requirement like this is at a time of a discretionary act. If you take the discretionary act tonight, not imposing this as a condition, later the applicant gets to vote whether or not he wants to spend that money. And as we've found in the past, most people won't choose to donate money to the county to do something that...
Well, but my point is, is that none of the other, every, every other piece of property there has developed. So none of those people have been, I don't know, I'm asking.
I thought I heard George say we did have deferred.
I believe, and we will double check this for your board if you wish, I believe there were some agreements along, I've been involved personally with at least one. Now, I don't know if there has been many before my time.
But the other thing I would note for the board is that the board does change standards over the years. You've upgraded how you do infrastructure in the county. And if the board took the position, we're never going to require any more than we required of a prior person, I think you would have standards in this county you wouldn't want to have.
Yeah, I, I think the little difference here though, Larry, is, I think we're somewhat struggling with is that this is in a drainage district or a zone and, and we're collecting fees off of that. So one, you know, we're collecting fees, but obviously those fees aren't, there's not enough fees being generated or programmed to make all the improvements. And so we're still requiring property owners as they come before the board on discretionary act to, to also pay beyond what act to, to also pay beyond what fee we're collecting. I think that's what we're struggling with here a little bit. We're trying to find something that's amenable, that's fair to everybody, as far as, you know, you know, we're collecting fees, but it's not enough, so we're going to also, you know, charge somebody more money on top of that.
I think, though, the bottom line is, once we put that drainage system in place, and we have to put that drainage ditch, the Livo Canal, if we put that at a grade that can handle the type of volume that we're talking about, we would have to take out whatever structures are along the way anyway.
Right.
And then I guess we could, as a board at that time, choose not to put them back. So I, I don't have any problem with, with keeping that in here, especially when the applicant doesn't mind either. When we make the major improvements there, he's already said, if everyone else is having to do it, we'll go for it. Any other questions, comments? Anything else you would like to say in regards to your appeal?
I didn't think of anything. I just had all of those three things, or, you know, that's all I think.
Okay, for, for my own, own mind, the cyclone fence you're talking about is not to be slatted, it's just an open cyclone fence?
Well, I would like to put a minus on mine, and I'd like to, like I was talking to the church people, I would like to landscape that redwood. They used to like the cypress, it's just a small tall tree, it's not very big enough, but I, I like redwoods. I would like to put a lot of redwoods on my place, you know, and they do grow a little slower, but you know, not, not as slow as most people think. You know, you fertilize with water, and they grow pretty fast, redwood takes a while.
Okay. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board, what's your pleasure?
I have a question of maybe Dale. You said that in our zoning ordinance, we require for contractor yards a solid fencing, that's in the zoning ordinance?
That's correct.
That our design standards kind of gives us the option?
No, actually, you have the option under the PD.
Okay.
This is a plan development. Plan developments, you can basically vary or change requirements of the zoning code as part of a specific design of the project itself. It's not part of the design review, it's part of the zoning code.
I'm sure Mr. Paschek raised the issue with the, with the planning commission on, on these items. Were you at that meeting? What were some of the?
At the meeting, we had, I believe Mr. McGuire was there, but a presentation was made by Mr. Larry Larson, and at the planning commission meeting, they got up and basically said, all conditions are acceptable.
You know, I have a question, Dale, on number twenty-seven. I, I agree with materials stored in the yard should not be stacked higher than the solid fence, or, or higher than the fence between the storage yard and the warehouse, and the front office parking area, but what kind of equipment do you see is, that might be stacked? I mean, if it just read material, obviously it's got equipment that's, some of it's very tall, and so it is going to be, without being stacked, it's going to be higher than.
Might go on a trailer, for example.
Yeah. So it seems like twenty-seven should read material stored in the storage yard should not be stacked higher than the fence between the storage, you know, blah, blah, blah.
We're looking at, basically, parking, or putting things on trailers and stacking on trailers, equipment on trailers up there next to it.
Well, I bet he has to do that for his business.
But he can move it back farther.
Supervisor Beckel, if I might, Dale, was there any chance this condition was added as a result of a problem we had south of Yuba City at a wrecking yard?
I.
I, I can't remember why this condition was added, but that's the type of thing I'm thinking of. They put up large shelves and stored equipment on those shelves, but it was salvaged equipment, and it was a eyesore to the neighbors and so forth.
That was the impetus for the change in the ordinance?
That's what I thought. So that's why it says materials and equipment, it's right out of the ordinance.
Did you say Oswald?
Yes, it's down in that area.
But it does say, "This will not prohibit the storage of large construction vehicles and equipment on site." The zoning code allows these vehicles to be stored on site, but it may require that they be located away from the fence as to not be visibly obtrusive in the view of the fence. Who just asked you not to park it right next to it?
You park it in the back, that's not a problem. The problem is I don't want to get in trouble later because of an interpretation. See, are, are you saying, are you saying with this on there, that if I come in at one o'clock in the morning, I gotta unload and unload off in the trailer that night because it's stacked higher than the fence? See, it's an interpretation.
But you'll have, you'll have this staff report forever. I'd frame it.
[laughing].
And that little page, or it's, page three of the staff report, the top, it states right there, "It not prohibits the storage of large construction vehicles and equipment on site."
If we're looking at a, a visual thing, I'm, I'm assuming we're primarily looking at it, are we looking at it from George Washington, or are we looking at it from also from the property to the south?
Basically, George Washington. The property to the south is the church, which is their parking lot, they have, they have that cypress fencing and landscaping along there, but basically, that's, you get back behind the church, that's all parking lot back there.
Would, would it be appropriate, then, to lease, so it's in the record, talk about some, some distance back from George Washington we're talking about again, so Mr. Patrick has some idea what we're talking about as far as, we're saying, should be back on the lot, it's, you know, two hundred foot from off of George Washington, it's five hundred feet or whatever it is, and others, that would give him some idea, you know, the, the westerly half of the lot, the westerly two-thirds of the lot or something, so, you know, he has some idea of what we're talking about, and future staff knows what, what the board has talked about, we're talking about. It's okay to have something taller towards the back, and, and what is the back?
If the board desire to put in a, some criteria like that, staff would like to have a fixed distance, because that we can measure, instead of, instead of trying to interpret the westerly half for the, of the property.
This is where it gets kind of weird, though. I mean, if I'm five foot two, I wouldn't see anything if it was twenty feet away from the fence, but if I'm Bob Barrett, there isn't a darn thing you're going to hide behind a six-foot fence.
Again, the road is higher than the property, and the condition is written, basically, or intended to provide screening from the road. When you're traveling down that road, you're going to be higher than, in some places, it's just sitting near your car, you're going to be able to look over that fence, or...
But, but isn't the landscaping that's being proposed, again, they've submitted a landscaping plan, and you have criteria in here saying that you've got to submit a final plan and all that kind of stuff, but, you know, the plan that's in our packet shows the redwoods, it shows various other pines and stuff like that, if it's planted similar to what's in this, you know, in, in this plan, and if it matures in three to five years, you're going to get a pretty solid blockage from George Washington. I'm just looking at, you know, this little drawing right here.
Created time with the best landscaping, that's correct.
You know, and it won't take very long to do that, so, like with anything, it may take a little bit of time. But the landscaping that's proposed on here, I would, I would guess the venture that far exceeds our minimum standard for landscaping, if you count the amount of trees they have on here. They've got a lot of trees on that little piece in the front.
It certainly hints from what it looks like right now.
You know, they've got over two dozen trees, and they're all large trees in, in that little area in the front. That's, that's almost, almost a forest. So, you know, I'm less concerned about, you know, the, the visual aspect of this thing, as long as planning department holds the applicant's feet to the fire, that when they go out and building program, when they sign off on this thing, this landscaping is, is installed this way. And if it dies, I believe we have language that says the applicant needs to replant it, so if we're prudent about checking on things like this, this landscaping will be put in similar we see here, or will also be approved when plans are submitted to the county. If that's the case, I, I have less concerns about, you know, whether we've got a, a six-foot chain link fence with slats in it, or wood fence, or, or whatever else, if it's planted like this, if, if this project goes forward as the way it's being presented to the board.
So how would you change number, condition twenty-two, Dennis?
I think it might be easiest to do an addition to twenty-two. If it's your intention to allow a chain link fence, or chain link fence, as long as landscaping is in place.
Yeah.
That work?
That supports desire.
In, you know, in this situation, I don't have a problem with the chain link fencing. I mean, the landscaping that's being presented, shown to us this evening, there's a lot of landscaping there, and I don't have a problem with it. If it was a thousand foot, if, if it was tater fertilizer, fertilizer, which was built years ago, which is built to a totally different set of standards than we have today, but if that was being proposed for a project like this, I'd have concerns with just all the chain link fencing across there. Again, I'm sure when they built, they built to the, the standards of the county at the time, and, and we have more stringent requirements. What I'm looking at here, since it is a PD, a plan development, what, you know, satisfies, I think, our intent of what we're trying to do aesthetically to screen the property from cars going by and, and the, and the neighborhood that's across the street.
So twenty-two could read, "The fence separating the warehouse storage yard from the office and office parking area shall be constructed of either wood or masonry materials or cyclone fence."
Chain link fencing.
Chain link fence.
How about this? Chain link fencing, if substantial landscaping is provided.
Well, it, it is, if, aren't we approving these plans basically in concept tonight? In other words, they have, have to finally be submitted to planning for ultimate approval, but again, aren't we approving what we have in our packet?
Yes, you are.
So I'm, I'm basically approving twenty-four trees, was ended up being twenty-three trees, or twenty-two or twenty-six, in other words, I'm in conception of approving what I see here this evening. So that is substantial landscaping. And now, unless we're...
Again, I, I heard that.
We can say that on twenty-two.
Substantial landscaping, so I include it in the condition.
Okay.
We've put substantial landscaping as shown in the, um, the plan?
I would think the applicant, I would think the applicant would want his facility to look as nice as the church next door, the enhancement of the whole ambiance of the area, and, and with what I see here, if I overlay the chain link fence from exhibit on the top of the page versus the landscape exhibit on the bottom of the page, I see a, I see something where within ten years, you won't even see the fence.
The chain link fence or cyclone fence, whatever, in a few years, you're not going to see it anyway. How can you see it through that dense forest to see the fence? You know, I, I don't see the fence as an issue, other than, and the, the cost. Solid fence costs a lot of money.
Well, we had a project on ninety-nine where we recommended landscaping, and the type of landscaping that was used, that particular plant probably takes twenty years if you really take care of it, and consequently, they're still there, they're not growing worth a darn, you can still see everything. So that's where we're being a little on the...
I've, I've got redwoods that, at my place where I live, that really have grown them all. My, my wife looks kind of alike, but they're, they're big trees, and they grow fast, they will fertilize a couple times a year if they have long water. Takes probably ages for a redwood to grow to be able to really grow.
But again, since this is a, a PD plan, what's being presented is what is being approved, so obviously, Mr. McGuire can take some liberty making some minor modifications to the, to his elevations if he needed to from a structural standpoint, but basically, when the plans are turned into the county, they need to look like these drawings here, the site plan needs to look like what's being presented in that. So if there's substantial changes, Dale's going to be back before either the planning commission or the board saying, the, the project's been modified, and here are, here are substantial changes to the project that was previously approved. So as long as they're conforming to the, these drawings, and I'm assuming that's why we have them before us, to approve.
That's correct.
I don't have a problem with it.
Actually, another thought entered my mind, just when staff looked at this, and they thought there was water from Hillcrest, was it?
Hillcrest.
Are, are there any concerns about fire flows, or any water for...
The project will have to comply with the building code requirements, whether or not they're hooked up to Hillcrest water.
Yeah, there's a requirement of a hydrant being placed on site, and that's still a requirement with Steel Crest water or private well.
Or other options, and there are other options in the building code, other than hydrants, however, it's up to the applicant to propose those.
Gallons per minute?
Solutions that meet building code and fire code requirements.
Okay.
There, there were fire hydrant requirements for water flows and gallons per minute in here, and I just lost it, but...
I believe that's building code section.
It's item seventeen.
Well, so basically, it appears after listening to all the discussion that we're going to do exactly what staff said, deny the application appeal pertaining to condition twenty-two, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. However, we are changing the twenty-two to what was suggested, and do we even have to mention deferment of the drainage pipes? We should mention that?
Probably should mention it to satisfy the applicant's concern.
Excuse me, I said twenty-seven, twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
How do you state that?
Where's the condition that, that talks about the road improvement as far as deferred to middle, which one was that? Could it just be added to that? Item twenty-six being deleted?
Item twenty.
Twenty?
No.
Mr. Chairman, probably the easiest way is to delete number twenty-six and just say the, the applicant shall be required to enter into a deferred improvement agreement, providing for the installation of the crossings in accordance of the requirements of the Public Works Department.
Say that again?
Deferred improvement agreement shall be entered into with the property owner, providing for the installation of drainage crossings on the driveways in accordance of the Sata County requirements.
That's similar language, which you have as far as curb litter and sidewalks and the street widening that you're asking for, as far as deferred.
That's correct, that's pretty much standard language. I would suggest so, yes.
Okay, unless anyone can think of anything else.
The applicant has maybe a question or a...
This, number seventeen, I think, goes on one touch limit. The, it's a fire hydrant. There is a water line that is in industrial part now. There's two wells in that industrial circle. There's one over on the, the north street, there's one over on the south street of, of the actual U, and they're tied together, and there's, that pipeline comes out on this property, I, I believe, I believe it's by foot off of the fence, and runs down behind the building I have now, and out onto industrial, the circle there, and feeds it there. You could put a fire hydrant there attached into that line and bring it up there wherever you need it to be. I don't think that fire hydrant is an issue.
Okay, good.
Probably survive, probably survive the property.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we need a motion then to do what the heck we talked about here.
Would that be the original recommendation, sustain the applicant's appeal of conditions eight, nine, eleven, and twelve, by amending those conditions as reckoned by staff here in, and deny the applicant's appeal pertaining to conditions twenty-two, twenty-six, and twenty-seven with the revised language that we have as far as the chain link fencing, the deferred improvement agreements for the crossings? I believe that.
Did you want to put a, a distance requirement on twenty-seven?
As long as they're going to put the landscaping in that's shown, I don't see a problem with that.
So could you read how item number twenty-two will now read?
I have, "Solid fence separating the warehouse storage yard from the office park, in office parking area shall be constructed of either wood or masonry materials or chain link fencing material if substantial landscaping is provided as shown in the landscaping plan."
Okay, and number 27 will read as it currently does, because we all understand that his equipment, okay, and then 26 will read as George stated.
Yes.
Yep, right. Yep, sounds good.
Okay, now who can make it into a motion?
I just did.
Okay, I have a motion.
I have a second. Any further discussion?
I think the only comment I'd like to make, if this was a piece of property that was gonna be in our new industrial area or sitting all by itself, I think we'd be looking at this thing totally different. I think what we've come up with actually does blend more with what's already there and actually upgrades it. Don't know why I felt I needed to say that.
Is the applicant, are you clear on what we've done? Okay, I just.
I hope you are, too.
Yeah. Well, you know, I just wanted to make the comment before we vote. It pleases me to see a local business and existing business expand in this area, and I think that's really good news for Sutter County. As much as we work to attract new business, we also need to be working to expand the business that we currently have, and you're doing that, and I'm happy you're doing that, and you bring a lot of money into this community, and I'm glad you're expanding, because you'll bring some more, and.
Well, I'm trying to get a Marysville company, which is really a sister company of ours, I'm trying to get them to overdo that.
Go for it.
Well, yeah, I'm working on, I'll, in a few days.
Are you a general contractor?
Yeah.
Didn't hear me publicly say that. I said, "You didn't hear me publicly say that."
Jim, you know, this hasn't been easy. I know you've had a long time going at this, I know the trades and everything, but I think you're gonna be happy with what you got here, so, I hope it.
Well, I'm glad to use this, since I spent 25 years trying to use it while on the other side, I never was able to, so it's kind of nice to be able to use something. I, I would like it nice, though, also, because, you know, at my age, I'm gonna be doing this forever, and so I'd like it to be nice, because the kids are all in love. Yeah. I understand that. That's, um, that.
Okay, let's make this official and vote on it, all in favor say aye.
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 As opposed, it carries unanimously. Okay, brings us then to correspondence, items number 16 through 21.
I just wondered, in item 16, Larry, do you find that you, do you feel there need to be more stop signs out in Sutter as this letter is suggested? I mean, do you see that as a problem?
This one here's been kind of, I think it's a cross one we need to talk about, but not Maury, but Lyon needs to be talked about.
Okay. It was nice to get a complimentary letter as item number 17.
I was gonna mention that.
None of you have been down there lately, that is a very, very nice project, Bear River Bridge. I was complimenting Public Works a week ago on how well they did the overlay on Pleasant Grove Road, the Bear River Rio Oso Corner, and it's really, it's enhanced that little business community that's developed over the last 10 years there.
It's great.
You did something good.
Yeah.
Did a good job, guys, really did. Well, you said Baldwin did that, correct? Yeah.
Yeah, but we had to oversee it. Okay, other business, excuse me, public comments, anyone in the audience that would like to address the board at this time?
I just want to take a minute to introduce one of our new planners. Steve Geiger started yesterday. Steve come to us from City of Auburn, and prior to that, to the County of Fresno, and he started yesterday, and he's one of our associate planners.
Welcome aboard.
Glad to have you on.
Sort of got bathed in it tonight, didn't you?
You did, yeah.
You got an indoctrination.
We don't always change everything, you guys do, honestly.
We're trying to, I'm sure you understood that, that we've asked this to be brought back to us, so we kind of understand what we put into place, because we weren't really sure how it was gonna work, and hopefully, we'll get past this point where we have to look at all of them, we'll have it kind of straightened out, but, you know, we're concerned that our constituents and our business, that we don't just put rules in and not really understand what we're requiring of them.
Anything else from the audience? Okay, then, other business board supervisors, Mr. Silva.
I have nothing, thank you.
Ms. Bechtel?
I have nothing, thank you.
I have nothing. Dennis Nelson?
I have one, I'd like the board to send a letter to Elfrin and Mel Herick, who just celebrated their 60th wedding anniversary. On June 1st, they were born, they were married June 1st, 1941, in Livock. Livock was around 1941, do you know that case? But, anyway, they're longstanding members of this community, and I'd like to have a letter sent to them congratulating them on their 60th wedding anniversary.
All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, I don't think it became a city until 47, I believe, somewhere in there.
Good, I have one. Anybody notice in the paper today, there was a 22-month-old baby in the paper, and it belonged to one of our foster parents that we've had in our community, they've brought a lot of children in, and they adopted this baby here approximately 18 months ago, and the baby had shaken baby syndrome, it was blind. It wasn't expected to live an awful long time, but lived at least 22 months and had a good life, and they're loving parents, and they also have two others adopted through our services through Sutter County, and I'd like to have a letter sent to Amber and Dan Kesterson out in Sutter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else? Anything from the staff?
One comment, I forgot.
Too late, sorry.
I had, I had the privilege of giving away a scholarship at the SACTO meeting last week in Sacramento, and I should have mentioned that, but Bradley that I gave that away to the young man is going to Yuba Community College, and was just absolutely as excited as could be. We had a $1,000 scholarship, and when he got up to receive it, they matched it with a grant of another $1,000, so, he's gonna take civil engineering, and I told him to look you up out there, to get straight and narrow, but it was a very deserving young man, and it was a very, very moving event to see a foster child. I asked him how your mother, how his mother was, and he said, "No, I call her Granny." And I said, "Granny?", he said, "Oh, yeah, she's an older lady, she's 42 years old." And I said, "Well, you can call me Gramps then," and so I took him around and introduced him to some folks in the audience, but it was really, for a young man that age, I was quite excited about it and excited for him, so it was something that was just really neat, and I thank Ed Smith for helping me put together that particular person, it was just, it was heartwarming.
Yeah, you were describing that this morning.
Yeah.
It sounds like he's a very, very nice young man, and yeah, 42 at this time of my life, sounds like a spring chicken.
I'll take that again.
At that note, we will adjourn this meeting.